The Select Board, April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, could you please rise and say, uh, state of, uh, pledge of allegiance with me? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Vice Chairman Priest, could you read the, um, public meeting notice, please?
Yes, sir, one moment, because I did not have. Okay, apologies.
That's no problem.
Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty, or suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty, and the Governor's March fifteenth, twenty twenty, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the town of Burlington Board Select was being conducted via remote participation. Now, in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and or view this meeting on progress as broadcast on B C A government cable access television, B C A government coverage Facebook Live page, or by using the link provided on the agenda for our WebEx Cisco online meeting, or via phone at four zero eight, four one eight, nine three eight eight. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by commenting on the B C A government coverage Facebook Live page, its app function on the WebEx virtual meeting, or via telephone at seven eight one, two seven zero, one six three five. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Uh, before we begin, I just want to check, is Mr. Maxon in the room? Because, uh, I'm limited in what I can see. David?
No, I don't see him yet.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, um, Select, I'm Miranda.
Thank you. Um, I talked to Town Council today, uh, during the past week, I'm sorry, and I have to recuse myself from these meetings. So I am recusing myself from the meeting.
Okay, uh, Select, I'm Miranda, you're recused from the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Daddy, have, uh, we confirm with, uh, Mr. Maxon that he'd, he'd be in the meeting?
Yes, I think I got something from him. Let me give him a call.
Okay. I do want him here. He, he's a, a key essential, uh, person with regards to this, uh, subject. So I want to make sure he's here, you know, for the meeting.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, I don't recall if we said it once we had gone live with B C A, but did we mention that B C A will only be carrying this meeting, uh, uh, to their channel till seven P M? But that folks tuning in can watch it on Facebook Live?
Uh, no, I was going to mention that, but, um, you did such a great job, Nick. We will defer and say, yes, th- this meeting will only be televised till seven P M, uh, due to the fact that, uh, ways of meeting, ways of meeting starts at seven P M. Then residents, uh, and interested parties can watch it on Facebook Live if they wish. So, and while we're waiting for Mr. Maxon to join, um, I just want to go over, uh, the, the format of tonight's meeting. As you know, this is a meeting dedicated to one, uh, agenda item. That's the application for a small cell at on the Mall Road. Uh, so what I, the way I'd like to do it is, um, I'll give a brief opening statement. After that opening statement, I'd like to, uh, have Mr. Maxon speak as to any relevant information or input that he may have. After Mr. Maxon, um, I would then defer to the board members for their input and discussion. After that, I would then ask Attorney Brewer if we missed anything or anything that she believes we need to discuss or something that we, you know, that might need to be discussed further or to clarify anything that's been mentioned. After that, we will open up to the public So, that being said, uh, Mr. Maxon, real quickly, uh, what I'd like to do for this meeting, and then divert back to the, um, after the public speaks, then we will attempt to close the public hearing the format would be, I'm going to give a brief opening statement. and then go back to the board for consideration. Then I'll defer to you for some input or updates that you may have. I'll go to the board members to discuss the, uh, agenda item. Daddy, any update on Mr. Maxon?
Yes, he'll be, he'll be signing in very shortly.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So if everybody could just have a little bit of patience while he, we get Mr. Maxon on board. After the board members are finished, we will, I'll ask our attorney Brewer if she has anything that, if there's anything we've missed, anything that she believes needs to be discussed further. And as soon as he's here, I will begin the rest of the meeting. Uh, then I'll open it up to the public. And after the public has their say, we will subsequently close the public hearing and then go back to the board for discussion and vote. Uh, you all set, Mr. Maxon?
Yes, I am. Thanks for waiting for me.
Okay, no, thanks for joining us. So, that being said, over the last several weeks, I guess this is what they call awkward silence. we've had an open public hearing regarding this ish, the, uh, applicant, uh, the fi- the small cell, small wireless facility on the Mall Road by A T and T. We've had numerous meetings, a lot of the meetings, uh, were around the health and environmental issues around the proposal. Um, I want to say to this, this to the residents and to anybody who is interested. The Select Board is aware that town residents are concerned about the environmental and health effects of wireless telecommunications facilities. However, the Federal Communications Act of nineteen ninety-six specifically prohibits local governments from regulating these facilities on the basis of environmental and health effects of radio frequency emissions. We may only require that the facilities comply with applicable federal standards. In the event that the board approves this application, I expect that the board will include, as a condition of approval, that the applicant provide evidence of ongoing compliance with all federal standards. That is my, uh, opening statement. And, Mr. Maxon, I'm going to turn this over to you for any, uh, additional information or anything you may have come across recently, or just to update us and provide some input.
Sure, thank you. David Maxon with Isotrop, working for the board on this, uh, matter. Um, yes, in, in regards to your remarks about the Telecommunications Act, uh, there were, uh, additional questions that I asked, and I think, uh, board members and residents asked about the, uh, facility. And the applicant came back with a more detailed response of the, uh, projected emissions from the antennas on the pole. And, uh, what that shows is that, uh, there is a safety exclusion zone that just extends a matter of feet away from the pole for the general public and is even closer for, uh, trained workers, closer to the antennas, which means that at a distance of some four hundred plus feet, the emissions that would be reaching, uh, a location like the, uh, Leahy Clinic, uh, campus, um, would be diminished, uh, by a factor of like a thousand, uh, or more, uh, in, in its intensity. So, um, eh, really regardless of what safety standard people want to believe in, uh, whether they have faith in the, uh, federal standards, as I do, or they believe that the standards should be more restrictive, um, the emissions that would be arriving at the buildings around, um, the location of the pole will be way below the federal safety limits and, uh, below most other safety limits that are, uh, in the world. So, uh, I think, uh, for those who might be on the fence and not sure whether, uh, this facility is, is a risk or not, uh, I think, uh, the information the applicant has provided and that I have, uh, validated, uh, gives us, uh, uh, some reassurance that, uh, it's well within the safety limits. Um, and, uh, as you said, that is pretty much all we can do to evaluate this proposal, uh, to confirm that it's well within the safety standards, uh, that are applicable under federal law.
Thank you, Mr. Maxon. At this time, I'm gonna open this up to the board. Uh, questions, comments, thoughts, suggestions, and I'll start with the Vice Chair, Mr. Priest.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I think it's, I think it's also worth noting, too, that, uh, you know, for folks who are on the call, just as a point of information, that, um, as a board, we have a warrant article, uh, you know, to be further discussed, but that, you know, uh, we're aiming to have further studies be done, a peer review, uh, with regard to small cell, knowing that, you know, we don't know everything and that, you know, from a town, we want to, you know, see if town meeting is wanting to make an investment in gaining, uh, some level of, you know, continued, um, you know, I guess, uh, education on the matter, um, as time was forward. Um, you know, and while I wish that we had to be more updated from the S C C with regards to their Telecom Act of ninety-six, uh, we do not. Um, so with that said, um, you know, I, the, the one thing I wasn't a hundred per- and ten percent, uh, sure on, uh, just wanted a moment of clarification, was the, uh, standalone pole, obviously is going to meet all of the design standards, uh, requested, but, uh, uh, in terms of height, uh, it'll maintain the same height as the, 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 the recommended pole that was initially put in the application, or is there a height differential?
Mr. Parry?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can everybody hear me? Terrific. Uh, Ed Parry, P A R E, I'm attorney of Brown Rodney, I represent A T and T, uh. Yeah, I think we have had some back and forth about the height of the light fixture. So, what we proposed to do was to maintain the height of the existing light pole. And let me punch up, existing light pole itself, the structure that holds the, uh, luminaire, I think is Mr. Maxon referring to it. It's just, uh, over thirty feet in height. We were trying to stay within that thirty feet, which would include our antennas. There's been some discussion through staff, through our technical review meeting, and I believe a couple of the hearings that, uh, the board may have a preference to keep the light fixture at the same elevation, which is the bottom of the light bulb is actually at twenty-eight feet, seven inches. We can accommodate, we can repl- we could put the light fixture in this, at the same height on the pole, but our antennas can't go below the light fixture. So it would mean some additional height. I think our estimate that I provided to the board is roughly about thirty-five feet. Uh, to handle our antennas and to keep the light fixture at, uh, that, that the same elevation it is. So that gets, you know, I, I did notice in your policy, uh, that for light poles, it's thirty-two feet or ten, or thirty-two feet or ten percent higher than the actual, the poles in the area. So I think we're within a foot or two, um, if we maintain that, you know, light fixture at that twenty-eight feet, six inches or two inches, whatever it is. Um, we might need some sort of waiver from the board to allow us to then stack. I mean, we'll keep it as tight as we can, but to allow us to put the light fixture at the same location, stack the antennas on top as designed. And again, we might get to a thirty-four, thirty-five foot maximum, when the maximum would probably be thirty-three feet.
Um, Mr. Parry, I, I apologize if, if my, my question was not clear. I do recall the thirty-five foot, uh, request based on the, the luminaire positioning. My question was in reference to if a standalone pole was approved by the board this evening. If the pole sans luminaire altogether would maintain the same height that you're requesting, um, of a, a, a light post with the antenna. So currently you're asking for the, the lamp post, I believe, at thirty-two feet. Um, I'm sorry, a, a total of thirty feet. If, if we said, you know, based on town engineer's concerns and everything else, that we would say, you know, go, let's go for a standalone pole, no, no lights. Um, you know, would, would it also be thirty feet tall?
But you're, a, an entirely independent pole of the light fixture, you mean a, a separate pole by A T and T itself?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it would be thirty feet. The top of the antenna would be a thirty feet.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, I don't really have any questions currently at this point. I just wanted to clarify that. As we continue discussion, I may have more, I may chime in. But for right now, I, I'm, I'm almost at.
Okay, uh, just real quickly for the members, what I'll do is I'll go through each member once. Uh, circle back with Mr. Priest to see if there's any questions need be, to be clarified. I will then ask Attorney, uh, Brewer to chime in. After that, I'll open up to the, the, the public. And then I'll also, then after the public, I'll go back to the board to see if there's any more questions or concerns that were raised from the public conversation. Uh, Mr. Sagrino, did you have something to comment on, or was, did, uh, Mr. Priest's, uh, question about the standalone pole answer that?
Uh, yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, I was just trying to point out, um, that Selectman Priest's question related to a standalone pole and not the light fixture. So I think there was just a little confusion, um, at the outset of that, uh, discussion. Thank you. I'm fine.
Okay, great. Um, Selectman Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, did, a lot of people submitted questions at, at the last meeting. Did everybody get the answers they were looking for over the last week or so, whatever it was? Does anybody?
I, I did.
Yeah, okay.
I did not.
And who would that be?
This is Ruth Rin. I did not get any answers to the three questions.
Okay. Um, all right, we'll have to figure that out, uh, as we go through this meeting. Uh, I, I also have, uh, a question about the, the, the light pole at that intersection and not, not the one that is the town, um, light pole that is, is the same as all the others going down towards the mall. It's the one across the street from that, uh, going up the hill, uh, where there is, uh, it's not one of the decorative, uh, light poles. Uh, there's no handicap crossing. Um, uh, I was just curious, um, why that wasn't considered, uh, as to be the pole that we could use and leave the, um, the, the decorative ones alone.
Mr. Parry? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Parry?
Uh, I, I'm frankly not sure which pole you're talking about, uh.
If you're driving, if you're driving up the hill, if you're driving up the hill and you come to the lu- the traffic lights at the entrance to the mall, the last pole there is of the decorated, uh, group. Um, but if you, if you go through the intersection at the very next island, there's no decorative light, it's just a light pole. There's no handicap parking cro- I mean, crossing, uh, for the disabled. Uh, there's no, uh, obstructions of any kind. I was wondering why that wasn't considered.
Mr. Hogan, real, just quick, quickly, uh, excuse me, uh, Mr. Hogan, did you mean the mall or Leahy?
Coming up from the mall.
From the mall, okay.
To the entrance to Leahy.
Okay.
If you just go, if you just roll through that intersection, the very first, uh, light pole on the island is not one of the decorative ones. And again, there's no handicap crossing, there's no obstructions, there's no, there's nothing there, and it's not a, you know, it's, it's a pole. I was wondering why that one wasn't considered.
Mr. Parry?
If we can continue proceeding, I'll have, I have folks on the line here, I'll have them look to see, to see offline exactly which pole we're talking about. And I also have our radio frequency engineer here, uh, online. So it's, if we could, if you could continue, I'll come back to that, if we can come back to that question, I'll have our folks take a look at the pole. Uh, frankly, this is the, the first I've heard of that pole, but, you know, we'll certainly, we could go up on Google Earth and figure out what it is and come back with a response, uh, within a few minutes.
This is David. If you'd like to share a screen, I can show that on Google Earth right now.
I'm okay with that, David.
Okay. Yes. All right, is this, uh, am I in the right place? Let's see.
Yes.
So, um, eh, it's on the crossroad, is that what we were looking at?
Right, if you're coming out of the driveway from Leahy, which is from the, from the bottom right-hand side, when you get to Mall Road and you're going to be taking a right to continue up the hill, that island right there has a pole on it that is not similar to the decorative ones that go to the left down the hill.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes?
I believe that scheduled, one of the replacement poles, it's, it's scheduled to be a decorative pole at some point, if I'm not mistaken.
So do I have the right island?
Yeah, if I, if I could, if I could weigh, if I could weigh in here just a bit, uh, and not to, you know, I agree with Paul. When we met with the town a couple of years ago, uh, with respect to these, you know, that was an obvious choice since they, oop. Dear Left David. Since we had, you know, since they weren't decorative poles, but our understanding was they were due for replacement. I think they're, you know, our understanding was these were all being replaced.
Okay, if that's going to be a decorative one, that, that's going to travel up there, but it's, again, still, there's no handicap crossing there, there's, there's nothing else that would interfere with that being there.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Jim, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, it's my understanding that we, we've sort of reached some sort of a, uh, a bit of a compromise that the A T and T pole is going to be a standalone pole powered independently and, and, um, not be one of our poles. So something north of, uh, uh, where the original proposal was, I, I thought was, uh, what we had so- somewhat of an, an agreement on. Am I, am I incorrect?
Uh, Mr. Runyon, I believe, uh, we did, like you said, sort of talk about a standalone pole, not, uh, connected or affiliated with the town. I know the, the town engineer was opposed to that. Um, the question that was unanswered, at least that, to my knowledge, was the location of that standalone pole.
Okay, and, and I, I think that's, I was, at least I was under the impression that it was in the vicinity of what, uh, Selectman Hogan was just talking about, something just north of the, uh, the crosswalk closer, you know, going up the hill toward Cambridge Street, but, uh, would provide adequate coverage for the, uh, for that area.
All right, thank you, Mr. Runyon. Uh, Mr. Sagrino?
Uh, yes, just to clarify for the board, um, the board had asked if, um, I would request, uh, from Mr. Parry whether there were any additional locations within that intersection where a standalone pole, uh, may work, uh, for A, A T and T. Uh, we provided you with that map. Uh, one of the locations was a little bit south of there, in between, uh, two streetlights and, and I think on opposite corners as well, um, that, um, may work for A T and T, um, as an alternative um, to, um, our own streetlight. And just to be clear, uh, town engineering is one hundred percent against putting it on the streetlight. So, you know, we felt as though a standalone pole might be the best course of action.
Thank you, Mr. Sagrino. Uh, Selectman Runyon, does that help at all?
Yeah, yeah, Jim, and, um, yeah, um, something standalone, it's, it's not, um, powered or, or, um, you know, town-owned, um, uh, maintenance or, or something, something totally completely independent from a, a existing pole.
Okay, anything else, Selectman Runyon?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Um, Selectman Miranda has, uh, recused himself, so I'll chime in at this point. Um, I too agree that a standalone pole, not with lights, that, uh, would be the best option. That way there, we don't have to have a height waiver. Um, so, uh, again, uh, it almost sounds like, you know, we have, uh, discussed everything I mentioned earlier, and now we're just down to, I think we're all in agreement that it's going to be a standalone pole, not affiliated or, 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 uh, part of the town's lighting system, it's going to be a freestanding pole that, uh, the town doesn't have to worry about maintaining li- you know, checking lights or anything like that. So, right now, I think the issue is trying to find the absolute best location for this, this pole. I just wanted, that's all I'll mention at this point, I'm just going to ask Attorney Brewer, if, is anything that we have missed, talked about, or anything at this point, when we're talking about, up, up to the stage of the meeting?
So if you are considering a standalone pole, you will want to introduce into the record, uh, and share with the public, uh, whatever maps that you've had that have shown the potential location as well as the design of this standalone pole, uh, so that, uh, the record is clear what you're considering, so that we can put it in the decision. Because at the moment, the application has not been amended to request permission to put in a standalone pole.
Okay, how would we, what would the best process be? Would we have, uh, the applicant provide that right now, a map with the location?
Yes, I thought there was a reference to having received, uh, a map that showed one or more potential locations that had been received from the applicant. And so it would be helpful if you would share that map with the public.
Mr. Parry, do you have that map accessible?
Uh, hang on one second, I think I had sent Paul. It may not be maps, I just maybe Google. Could you give me a second, I'll just search my email?
I will look forward as well, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sagrino.
Uh, do I need permission to share?
Daddy?
You're all set.
Thank you. So these are the three locations that we had, uh, am I off, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, I, I can hear you.
Yeah, okay, sorry. Um, so these were three locations, uh, we got a question back, uh, from the town administrator about, you know, where we would need to be if we, you know, didn't use that streetli- the, uh, decorative light. You'll see the decorative light is located just beneath the word Burlington on my screen right now. So based on the location of electricity and fiber, we suggested, uh, location A, obviously the median, uh, or in the island. Uh, location B or location C would all work. Uh, not to put our radio frequency engineer on the spot, but I'm going to ask him, uh, I've asked him through our, uh, discussion to see if the, eh, you know, in other areas, as long as That had been received from the applicant, and so it would be helpful if you would share that map with the public.
Mr. Perry, do you have that map accessible?
Uh, hang on one second, I think I had sent Paul. It may not be maps, I just maybe Google, could you give me a second, I'll just search my email, and I.
I will look forward as well, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino.
Okay, let me see if I can get this. Uh, do I need permission to share?
Perry?
You're all set.
Thank you. So these are the three locations that we had, uh, am I off, can everybody hear me?
Yeah, I, I can hear you.
Yeah, okay, sorry, um, so these were three locations, uh, we got a question back, uh, from the town administrator about. You know, where we would need to be if we. You know, didn't use that streetlight, the, uh, decorative light, you'll see the decorative light is located just beneath the word Burlington on my screen right now. So based on the location of electricity and fiber, we suggested, uh, location A, obviously the median, uh, or in the island. Uh, location B or location C would all work, uh, not to put our radio frequency engineer in the spot, but I'm going to ask him. Uh, I've asked him through our, uh, discussion to see if the, eh, you know, in other areas, as long as we're in the proximity there. Uh, you know, we'll have to consider things like maintenance, but, you know, the, the proposed installation is probably, you know, similar as far as. You know, impact on traffic during installation and construction. Um, but the, the three that we said would, you know, all function fine and probably, you know, work best from a fiber and elec- in an electricity standpoint. Would be A, B, and C in that order, but, you know, from a coverage perspective, anything in the vicinity. Uh, you know, should function, and I'll ask Kevin as he's looking at this, uh, I, are you considering the other island, I, I guess. I'm a little, you know, to give definitive answers, we just, you know, we need to have a sense of what we're looking at, are you looking at a. Like a thirty-foot pole where A may be, or a thirty-foot pole in the other island, or at. B or C, that, you know, I can have, you know, Kevin weigh in if we can kind of identify what the, what the universal consideration is.
Certainly, that, that's good.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Kevin, you're, you're all set, Kevin wants to chime in here.
Yeah, so, um, you know, any of the three locations here would be fine, um, a little bit uphill on the, the northern part of the island. Um, or I guess it would be the eastern part would be fine as well. Um, you know, the, the whole intersection would essentially do well for us.
Okay, thank you, Kevin, Attorney Brewer, how? Um, i- if the board chose to pick the, uh, east of the island to the east. Uh, how difficult would that be to get into the record tonight where it's not showing on the map?
Uh, I, I would think we should be able to drop a pin. On the map to show the final location that the board would give permission. Uh, and condition approval on, the location, condition approval.
Ed, can you stop sharing your screen?
Give me one second.
Thank you, thank you, Attorney Brewer, I'm going to ask Selectman Hogan a quick question, uh, Selectman Hogan, you were the one that brought up on that island, how far up? Do you think from the intersection on that island, what was your, your thoughts on that?
Um, I'm going to withdraw my original thoughts, looking at that map, I'd be comfortable with A, the choice A. B and C still look like they could be, um, in the way of the handicap crossings. Back and forth where A is separated from that also, so I'm comfortable looking at that, so if they already have a design. That they could put in there, we can, we can identify it by putting a pin in that area for A, choice A. Um, and show the, uh, design drawing if it's the same that they'd be using regardless of which location.
This is David, can I show you, uh, street view on Google again?
Sure, certainly, David.
Identify those?
Yep, certainly, David.
Share. Alrighty, so, um, I forget, A was, uh.
A was right there in the middle.
Yep, he just looked right there.
Okay, yep, and then to the, uh, north, was that E?
That was B.
Okay, one thing I observe over here, there is, uh, a tree. And, um, one of the things that the policy is concerned about is disturbing tree roots, so we want to keep that in mind. And on the right, you already have some infrastructure with, what is this, a bus, bus stop?
Correct.
Um, that's probably not a bad location for this sort of thing from a infrastructure point of view. Um, and certainly either side of the street would be less intrusive during in- construction. Uh, and installation and during maintenance than it would be if it were on the median.
So, David, correct me if I'm wrong, but it almost seems like, uh, option C, it would be our recommendation? Or your, what do you think is the best of the three?
Uh, this is just from an infrastructure point of view, this is not, you know, visual, uh, uh, point of view, but, um. Uh, I, I, I think it would, it would not be, it would probably be less objectionable visually than having something in the median between these two lamp posts.
Okay. All right, Mr. Hogan?
Just looking at the previous, um, overhead shot. Uh, I got the impression that B and C were at both ends of the handicap crossing. Uh, which is going to go right through the, the center, uh, which is why I thought that the, the first choice would be A, because it does not. Yeah, interfere with that at all. Right there where, where you just threw, there's a, there's a curb cut right there.
Right, there's a crosswalk right here, right?
Right, so at either end, if, if that's where the pole's going to go for B and C. Then, then there could be an issue with the, the crossings, whereas A. You know, how, how many, how many times are we actually going to be doing construction or maintenance on it that it's going to be a major issue? If it's in, uh, choice A?
Well, I don't think it's a major issue, during construction, obviously, we'll have to, you know, put the pole in, uh, you know, there would be some interruption as we. Uh, as we construct, you know, the maintenance could be more like a bucket truck, um, but I don't, you know, it's, it's not going to be so intrusive, uh. It, it's not like they visit every week, once they get up and running, they, you know, tend to operate, so if, if we were to have problems with equipment, if, uh. There are going to be equipment upgrades, um. You know, then you'd see more visits, but I think, what, what, once, once it gets going, it'll, it should be pretty minimal.
Okay.
Mr. Hogan?
Having been on the Handicapped, uh, Disability Access Commission for many years, uh, not only in Burlington, but a lot of communities. Poles and trees and electrical boxes are always put in the way of the handicap crossings, and I want to stay away from that if it's at all possible.
Well, this is David, I was suggesting that regard, um, we also try to want to keep it back from the stop line at an intersection, because if you have a bucket truck there. Uh, blocking traffic and, uh, you know, police detail, it's a little easier to work with if it's not right up at the intersection, so if you were to, I don't know if you can see my cursor.
Yeah, yeah.
To the other side of the, um, uh, canopy for the bus stop, um.
Yep, yep.
That would get it out of the way of, of foot traffic at, and, and wheelchair traffic at the, uh, crosswalk. And pull it back from the stop line a bit.
Okay, so the trees wouldn't be an issue there once you, once you get up in the air there?
Uh, when I was looking at the, uh, the street view, it did not, eh, from terms of tree roots, it did not look like it would be as much of a concern as it would be on the other side of the street, but. As terms of clearances, that would be something that AT&T would have to, uh, evaluate.
Okay, so if it doesn't interfere with the t- trees or vice versa, I, I, I could accept C as, as a strong option.
Thank, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Hogan, I'm going to just circle back to Vice Chair, uh, Nick Priest to see if he's got any follow-up to the questions that were raised.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, one that was raised and then just an additional one, uh, for, uh, the town engineer if, if at all possible. I'll start with that one, uh, because I believe I saw Mr. Hayes on the line, um, it was, there was comment in. The question answer that went back and forth between everybody, um, around the possibility of frequency interference. With town frequencies, I know that that is a FCC thing, but I just wanted to ask if Mr. Hayes knew. If there was any kind of equipment that might be interfered with in this area by this fiveG pole.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes, uh, thank you, Don, uh, everybody, uh, I hope everybody can hear me, okay?
Yes.
So, so, so back in, I, I'm sorry, am I not the right person?
No, I'm sorry, no, we have a Tom Hayes, but we have a Don Hayes, so, Mr. Don Hayes with a D.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, hold on, hold on one second, um, yeah, Mr. Tom Hayes, you got a question?
You're looking for Don Hayes, correct?
That is correct.
The RF engineer, alright.
You're, you're Tom with a T, Mr. Don with a D, go ahead.
Alright, thank you.
To, to clarify though, I, I would like Tom Hayes, our engineer, weigh in as well. That was, that was the question, but I'm hap- boy, oh, boy, Don Hayes and Tom Hayes, what a pain.
Yeah.
It, it's the why and the no why, you know?
I'm happy to hear from both of you.
Mr. Don Hayes, we will go start with you first.
Uh, 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 thank you, so, back in the very, very early days of cellular-type communications, there was. A company, uh, that was using, uh, around nine hundred megahertz and. Uh, that was interfering with a lot of, uh, communications, especially, uh, emergency-type communications, and. The FCC stepped in and, uh, uh, got the situation fixed. Uh, this was in, in, in the late nineties, and, um, since then, we've gone to one hundred percent digital communication. Uh, and the FCC is requiring a much narrower spread or cleaner signal, if you will. Uh, many of the communications, if not all, are digital now, uh, even in the towns and, and. And municipalities, police and fire, so that the, uh, interference really only occurs. If you put one antenna very, very close to another, so for example. If you were to desire to put a municipal antenna, a whip antenna, for example. Up on an AT&T pole, there would be a minimum separation required. So that there would not be interference, and so that the bottom line is, uh, uh, you are correct, interference is the. Sole jurisdiction of the FCC, but, uh, luckily, there would not be any interference from this type of installation.
Thank you, Mr. Don Hayes with a D, Mr. Tom Hayes with a T.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, RF is well outside my wheelhouse, so I'll have to defer to Don Hayes.
Oh, okay, did you, uh, have any reply or, uh, input from Mr. Priest's question?
Regarding, uh, conflicts with our two-way radio?
Well, that's, that was the question he asked, yes.
No, I got, again, that's, that's well outside my expertise.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
All right, uh.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Sagorino?
Um, at the outset of this process, uh, Attorney Brewer asked me to check with police and fire on that, and. We do not have any public safety communications equipment, uh, in, anywhere near this area, and, uh, we are digital as well, so. Um, we should be in good shape from that perspective in terms of interfering with public safety.
Thank you, Mr. Sagorino. Mr. Hogan, I'm sorry, Mr. Priest, did you have anything else? Mr. Priest, any follow-up, additional questions?
Yes, sir, sorry, I was on mute, uh, because it has to happen at least once a meeting. Um, ba- so, with regard to location C by the bus station, um, I kind of had the, a two-part question, one. Um, with regard to placement, because I, because I agree with Selectman Hogan around the, the, um, you know, ADA concerns and making sure that. The sidewalk is usable for everybody, um, you know. Do we have, does the right-of-way extend, uh, up into the bus stop area, and are we. Able to use land like off of the sidewalk, um, for placement, and, you know, if so. Would it affect, uh, the feasibility, the, the usability of the pole?
Mr. Perry, I'll defer that to you, I will actually, um. The questions regarding, and Mr. Priest, the questions regarding how far the town right-of-way goes into the Leahy property, is, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tom Hayes with a T, are, are you able to address that issue?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the, the, the right-of-way is a hundred foot wide, but, um, to determine exactly where it is relative to the sidewalk. Um, there'd have to be an on-ground survey.
Okay, um, Mr. Perry, then I'll ask you this, uh, when you, uh, when AT&T chose, uh, sp- uh, C as a, a potential location. Were they certain they were in the public right-of-way, or were they into Leahy property?
Yeah, we do, we don't know that, uh, we were asked, you know, whether other locations in proximity would work from a coverage perspective. Uh, so we did not, you know, the sidewalks are there, we would, you know, anticipate that the sidewalk would be in the public right-of-way, so that we could install. You know, in that area, we know obviously the island is, um, but, you know, there would have to be some additional. You know, work done eventually just to confirm, uh, the location, would have to stay within the public right-of-way, obviously.
Okay, can, I'm just going to ask you a quick follow-up then, if you were to put that pole, just speculative here. On the public right-of-way, would you still be able to maintain ADA compliance with the sidewalk in that area?
Well, we'd ha- I mean, we'd have to slide the pole as necessary to comply, so we're certainly going to comply. I, I think that's part of the reason why we thought using location A made sense, because it didn't deal with any sidewalk issues, um. You know, it's, it's in a location where, you know, other poles are in a row, I understand that it's not, you know, a decorative lamp post, wouldn't be a decorative lamp post. Um, so, you know, I, I think that's more of a decision from a, you know, visual perspective, but, you know, if, as long as there's room in the public right-of-way, and we can maintain. Uh, compliance with the ADA, I mean, we have no interest, uh, you'll see throughout my application, I always say, we always, you know, we will comply with all applicable standards. I, I agree, we wouldn't, you know, put the pole that where it would interfere, but to sit here this evening and say, well, this exact location, you know, would work, I, I think. You know, we're drilling down a little too deeply before we get out there with engineering, confirm, you know, where the right-of-way is, where we can install the pole. You know, obviously, we're not looking to put something in the way of anyone, but it will be an introduction of another piece of, you know, street infrastructure. Um, you know, which may or may not, you know, deal with, you know, access along that sidewalk. David, could you scroll in just a little bit, I'm just wondering. Uh, zooming in, I guess?
Yeah, thanks for asking, uh, it turns out that the, the, the property line that we're interested in disappears as I scroll in, so. Um, and the registration of these property lines is pretty good, uh, but it's certainly not survey quality. But the, I, I snapped a line, and that is the one hundred feet that Mr. Hayes was talking about, and it's roughly symmetrical around. Both sidewalks, I'm going to zoom in now, and you can see the, uh, that particular line disappears. But you can still get a sense for it from the next line up. Um, and, uh, i- i- I, I don't know, but perhaps the bus kiosk was. Positioned on town property, or whether it obtained permission from the private property owner to encroach. But, uh, that would suggest that there is at least a few feet of space between the sidewalk and the property line, uh, to work with.
Thank you, Mr. Maxon, uh, Mr. Perry?
I mean, I, I, I guess if that's the preferred location, we could, you know, undertake the survey, I guess, you know. We're going to be putting something in the, you know, in the sidewalk area potentially, so we may want to have a backup to go back into the island. If that were to occur, uh, if, if the right-of-way only goes to the end of the sidewalk, then we're going to interrupt sidewalk flow to some, to some extent. Um, so I, I think to be safe, you know, if we did something like that, we could put it in the public right-of-way and didn't have to seek, you know, any approvals. You know, we would be amenable to that if we could not do that, because we had to put it right in the middle of the sidewalk, and, you know, that interrupts. Pedestrian flow, you know, I understand that also, uh, and folks, uh, with disabilities using the sidewalk. That we could, you know, put it over into the island at, you know, at the location A. So, you know, if, if that's the preference, we can have the fallback, I think, you know, to deal with any issues that arise.
Thank you, Mr. P- uh, Perry, I, I do have one quick question, uh, sorry, Mr. Priest, I have a question before I take it. Mr. Perry, um, how far down the mall road from the crosswalk would, uh, site A be? Ten feet, fifteen feet? You're, you're muted. There we go.
I forgot that, I, I, I think we could put it, you know, equidistant if that worked, um. You know, again, we, we were just giving, trying to give the town administrator some sense of where we could locate. A non-decorative light pole in the area, so, there's been, there's been almost no due diligence, other than, you know, we know they would work. Uh, obviously, the closer we get over to the Leahy clinic area, you know, the better from a, from a capacity perspect- or from a radio frequency coverage and capacity perspective, but. Uh, you know, we, we could put it in between the two poles, I know that the policy talks about being equidistant, uh, to the extent possible. Um. So, there wasn't a great deal that went into this, you know, these alternative designs, you know, locations, any of those three would work from RF perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Perry, um, Mr. Priest, uh, anything further?
Nothing further this time, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Hogan? I'm sorry, Bob, muted. You're all set? Mr. Rinyan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last thing I want to do is confuse anybody further. But I thought earlier that we talked about the possibility of adding a, position D to the median strip to the east of the intersection. That would be acceptable and, 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 and provide the coverage necessary for AT&T. Also, you know, moving it further away from the, from the crosswalk as well as the bus station there. Am I, am I mistaken or is that an option? I thought we were gonna drop a pin to the east and, and see if that worked.
Yes, we, we did discuss that. We did not drop the pin as Attorney Brewer had suggested. Mr. Perry, is that a possibility?
David, if you could just, yeah, if you could put a pin, just, so you're talking about to the right of that non-decorative pole?
Yeah, yeah. Any, anywhere in that, that, in that area, Ed would, in, in my opinion, would be a better location. It's not on the, it's not a sidewalk, it's further away from the crosswalk and the bus stop. As long as, if, 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 if that would provide the coverage that, that they're looking for, that would be my, that would be my preference.
Mr. Perry, if I may just interject real quick, our policy says equidistant, so it would have to be between the two poles on that island? Sorry, Mr. Perry, you had?
Yeah, I'm just, I want to, oh, between those? All right, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna talk to Kevin Brewer offline here just to see if, you know, that is something that works for us. And I'll respond shortly.
Okay, while we're doing that, Mike, while we're waiting for your answer, I just wanted to chime in real quick. Something that hasn't been mentioned yet is snow removal. When the plows come down the street, the snow goes to the right. So my opinion, especially with like a road like the Mall Road where the snow can accumulate, a lot of snow can accumulate. If we put these on the sides, there's a potential of damage from a plow. And I know they do sometimes have to plow to the middle, but almost all the time, if I'm not mistaken, the plows pushed to the right, which means the plows would be, the snow would be pushed up against the pole if it was on either side of the Mall Road as opposed to the median. So right now, I like the idea of not having it on either side because of the crosswalks. And it, it, to me, the median, just, it's my opinion, the median seems to make more sense. Sorry, Mike, if interrupted, but I just wanted to get that thought out about the, the snow.
No, I'm, I'm fine. I'm kind of liking, what, what I'm seeing on the screen right now. I, I think that's an area that's, would be least impactful.
Mr. Perry, any answer yet?
Uh, not yet, not yet. Just hold on. Or if you want to proceed, I mean, we should be able to give you a pretty quick answer.
Okay. Also, if you look at that to concur with Selectman Rinyan, that also appears to be closer to an open parking area as to the buildings around there, so. Mike, thank you for bringing that back up. Michael, anything else while they're trying to get that answer?
No, Jim, that's, that's all I have. What, what do you say? It has to be equidistant to the, between the poles? Is that our bylaw or something?
According to the policy, it's supposed to be equidistant. I'm gonna ask Tom, Town Administrator Sagrino, Paul, I can't remember off the top of my head. Is it a must-be equidistant or equidistant if possible?
I can look that up right now, but I believe it's a, you know, if at all possible, but I'll just take a quick peek.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure when you'd like to take this up or if we want to wait until the, the public have a chance to speak. But I know that Ms. Rin's questions, that she'd emailed the three questions she was referring to earlier this evening, are all asked of us, the select board. So if at some point we want to address her directly.
Yeah, I, I'd like to do that when we do the public, open it to the public, just so that we don't miss anybody. I don't want to go to the public, back to the selectmen, back to the public, so I'd, I'd like to be a little consistent with that.
Absolutely. I know we've got a, a hot minute while we wait for the applicant.
Well, you know, in all honesty, though, we, we, we don't want to take this lightly. It's our first application. If it takes some time, if it takes a few delays, I'd rather take the delays and do it right than rush it and get it wrong.
Agreed.
Mr. Chairman, you have that? That location would be suitable? The one, the one caveat there is we don't know how tall that light pole is. And that would be the only, as long as we're up above that, and I assume that they're probably pretty close in height, then we should be fine.
Okay, I'll go and ask Mr. Tom Hayes with a T. Mr. Tom Hayes, would you happen to know the height of the light poles along that stretch of the Mall Road?
I do not. We'll have, I'm gonna go look that up, see what we put in for those poles.
Okay, well, like I said, we want to make sure we get the right answers. Those are the non-decorative in that section, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
From the, at this intersection towards the east?
That's correct.
No, there's a stretch that are not decorative yet, yeah, they're scheduled to be decorated.
So the new decorative ones that are going in, do we know the height of those?
No, I, I do not have to look those up.
Okay.
Jim, I, I would, I would hope that it would mirror the, the architectural poles that are in the area. Because if you go, if you do go up a little bit further, it's South Bedford. At that intersection has the decorative poles. And I, and I assume at some point we're gonna complete the entire stretch of Mall Road.
Right, and I agree with you, Mike. I, I believe that we're not gonna put a high pole, a low pole, a high pole, a low. I believe it's probably pretty consistent. I haven't noticed anything out of the ordinary down there. They all seem to be the same height. So I'm assuming we're gonna have the same height. Again, it's an assumption, but I don't want to make this decision based on assumptions. So like I said, I'd rather take a few seconds and wait and if we can get the, the proper answer, I'd rather do that than, and not get the proper answer. So just please bear with us while we get some answers to questions that we don't have the answers to.
We had a rendering, we had a rendering in a previous meeting that mirrored quite nicely what, what's existing there currently in, in terms of decorative poles.
Okay, I'm gonna actually ask Kristen Kastner, ma, Kristen, I know you were in the call. Would you happen to have the answer to that or, or, or any of those questions that were being asked?
Selectman Tigges, Ms. Kastner told me this afternoon, she's actually in two Zoom meetings at once right now. So she may be presenting in her other meeting. I just wanted to give you an answer on the equidistant question. The, the policy says to the greatest extent possible, new wireless support structures shall be located in line with existing lotlines or in equidistance from any two existing structures. So to the greatest extent possible is what the policy says.
Okay, so we're not committed to the equidistant. If it can be done, we'll do it. But if it can't be done, then we can do it as close as possible. So it does give us some, some movement, some fluctuation. We can flex it a little. Mr. Perry, any thoughts yet?
Only that we, I mean, our preference would be to avoid any metal. I mean, that's the one thing that, you know, the signal doesn't appreciate, which is why there's a concern about, you know, the light pole and whether it would interfere, especially trying to get back into that intersection and towards Leahy. So it would, you know, without knowing the height of them, a little bit difficult to give a, a definitive.
Mr. Tom Hayes with a T, are you able to access that information?
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I don't have those files with me right now.
This is David. I've just, I measured the length of the shadows of both those units and they're about the same. In fact, the, not to the top of the lamps, but the top of the pole on the ones on the east, it's, the shadow is a little bit shorter than the pole on the decorative fixtures to the west. So they're about the same.
All right. Again, I don't see any reason why we would have poles of different size along the road, that roadway. And then that combined with Mr. Maxson's analysis, I don't think that's too much of an issue. What do you think, Mr. Perry?
Yeah, hang on, I'm still communicating. Hang on.
Okay. While you're doing that, I'm gonna ask Attorney Brewer again. Attorney Brewer, anything that popped up in the last few minutes that may be worthy of discussion?
I have nothing new to add. I think you are doing exactly what you need to do.
Thank you. Mr. Hogan?
One quick question while we're in this pause. Attorney Brewer, where are we on the clock right now?
So the shot clock deadline is April nineteenth. So the thought is that through tonight, we will have a decision of the board and that we can finalize a written decision by the nineteenth. My, my hope is that we will set the parameters of the conditions for approval or disapproval, that you will, you will have set out what your decision is and that you can then authorize Chairman Tigges to execute a decision on behalf of the board that meets the parameters that you set tonight.
Thank you, Attorney Brewer. Mr. Hogan, if you don't mind, Kristen Kastner's back in. Kristen, just the question, not sure if you even have the answer. Are all the heights, all the poles along the Mall Road the same height, light poles?
Are you asking me that question?
Yeah, we, Tom doesn't have the answer. We're not sure. I, I'm just throwing up and maybe, you know, if you know they're all the equal height.
All the pole, well, we have two, a couple of different, I, I'm, I'm sorry, zoning by our views, so I'm kind of just jumping in. The poles, there's the, well, there's old poles and new poles, so they're all, the old poles are super high, the newer ones are a little lower, I think. So I think, I mean, the goal is to standardize the pole height. The, you're talking about the light pole?
The newer light posts, yes.
Yeah. I believe they're, they're all the same design and they're all the same like cut sheet. So I assume all the new, new lights are all the same. I would defer to Tom Hayes if he's still here.
Yeah, Tom doesn't have that information at hand, but.
But we still, I believe we still have some of the old Cobra lights too, which I think, you know, the idea is to not try to compare anything to those and to replace those.
Those are on their way out, I assume.
Right. Can I ask a question, a quick question of group just in terms of, I super apologize, I, but are you, are we still talking about the light poles? Are we talking about standalone poles? Are we still talking through that?
We're talking standalone.
Okay.
But we were looking for the rate, the height of those lights so that they wouldn't affect the standalone pole. Mr., I'm sorry, Kristen, did you have another question? Because I know Mr. Priest has one.
No, no, I just, I, I guess overall, I think that that's the good direction for us to be thinking about.
Mr. Priest?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have to, you know, just want to point something out. If, if the applicant was comfortable with a pole being equidistant between the, the other poles on the westerly island at the height that the poles are at, and all that fun, fun stuff. And it's more or less gonna be the same up the road. And we're gonna be replacing the current poles with the same decorative poles. You know, I would imagine that the placement is the same, that the effect on the frequency would be the same. You know, Mr. Max, am I, am I speaking in tongues or am I, am I making sense?
The, the comment that was made by the applicant had to do, I think, with the, the direction of travel of the signal and specifically to the Leahy site. So depending on where your, your prime target is, in this area, you're not, you're not shooting through any lamp posts. And if you're too far up the street, up this way, you know, there's a potential for that, but I imagine that we're still in, in good stead. Hardly because we're halfway between lamp posts, that there's still a good, good sweep.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perry.
And I'm, and I'm just hearing back from Kevin Brewer, our radio frequency engineer, that that location D that we're talking about should be fine. You know, from the coverage perspective. I, I think the, the uncertainty was we know what the existing decorative light poles are. We don't know what, you know, these light pole, the Cobra lights as we refer to them. But D should be, from our perspective, D should be fine if that's the board's preference.
Okay, Mr. Perry, I'm not sure if you're aware, but there is a plan. Those Cobra lights are coming down to be replaced with the same or similar light posts on that section.
Yeah, I, yep, and, you know, I got that. I, I, you know, what happens in the future is always the future, you know, you have a, you know, in, in any event, there, there's no point, you know, going around and around. Our radio frequency engineer says we should be fine with this.
Okay, so that, that section, that, uh, location is now marked D as a potential location. And we'll put that on the record that there's a potent, a, a, a fourth potential location. It's identified as letter D on the map. Attorney Brewer, anything else that needs to be done to get that into the record?
No, that covers it.
Okay, I'm gonna start real quick with the board again before I open up the public. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Priest?
No, sir, also.
Selectman Hogan?
No, I'm all set. Thank you. And if, and if, and if D is going to be appealing to everybody, we should make sure we're on record pretty soon and make a motion for that particular part of what we're doing tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rinyan?
No further questions.
Okay, just one question from Kristen Kastner. Kristen, you had a question on concealment?
All right, I still have my other computer. No, I just wanted to say, did we talk about, so with the standalone poles, did we talk about kind of concealment of equipment at the base of the pole? And, you know, not looking at just kind of a, just a, kind of like a monopole without equipment on top of it? Have we talked anything about that, kind of the design of that pole and the base equipment?
I don't believe we talked specifics, but it would be, have to reflect what we have in our policy.
Okay, I would recommend if it's a standalone pole, there's a lot of control in the standalone pole. You're not trying to make it look like something else. You're not gonna hang it on somewhere else. That there, I know that there's a lot of design, and Donna probably knows more than I do, a lot of design that integrates a lot of the equipment within the base of the structures themselves. So you don't have a lot of stuff on the side, and sometimes they even have them underground with kind of a, a, a box that on the surface of the median or wherever they are that you could access that equipment. So you're, you're really looking at kind of just that standalone pole, not a pole with stuff all on it. And I know, I think, I think the city of Denver just went through quite a bit of exercise on standalone poles with full integration of equipment with, within the poles themselves and/or underground. So you didn't have a lot of stuff within the right-of-way sidewalks and, and stuff like that. So I would encourage you guys to move in that direction. I think the guidelines do go into a lot of that, but when we get to specific design like we are here, I'd want to make sure from the applicant to get this, that specific design as to where those, that equipment will sit. I'd wanna make sure from, um, the applicant to get this, that specific design as to where those, that equipment, um, will sit.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Perry.
Can I, I'm sorry, yeah, I was just gonna, uh, reinforce that, and I think you're probably gonna ask Mr. Perry this question, which is, the lamppost that's proposed is really a post designed for concealing equipment and mounting antennas in a pretty concealed way on top. Excuse me, and, um, it's really probably just the same post without the lamps. But Mr. Perry can clarify.
Thank you, Mr. Max, grab a glass of water. Mr. Perry, can you, um, can you give us a, throw, put up a rendition, e- everybody to see?
Uh, yep, hang on one second, let me get the... Can everybody see this?
Now, yeah, oh, there we go. Well, we're not gonna do the light, right?
Well, the, but this is the, this is what I wanted to explain, as Mr. Maxon just laid out. So, yeah, we're not really building a, we're not really building a light pole, we're building a telecommu- small cell telecommunications facility. And then we add the lights back in. So, what you'd be looking at is the rendition on the right without the lights on it. So, it would just be the poles, all of the equipment, uh, and the meter and so forth would be in the base, uh, and you have the diameter. So, wha- what you'd be looking at is just taking off the lights from the pole as proposed.
Okay, before I go to the public, I'm gonna ask the, the board members again, if they have any questions regarding this, this specific pole, uh, Vice Chair Priest?
Mr. Chairman, uh, I promise this will be my last question until we go public comment. Um, uh, Mr. Perry, um, the, the antenna, uh, the little one that's on the outside, uh, as illustrated there underneath the, uh, luminaires, uh, the one-two-eight-one-five G mount detail. Um, is that the only one that's kind that would be mounted on the exterior of a pole? And is there any technology that would exist within the pole that would function the same way, but not be a little box on the pole?
It, it doesn't. So, these are the millimeter wave antennas, those are, those are actually in a shroud. We called them out on the plans, so that you can see the antennas, but they're actually in an equipment shroud itself. So, uh, you know, there will be a bit of a bulge there where those antennas are located, but those are very sensitive. Those are the directional antennas that, uh, we've talked about. Uh, those can't be screened behind anything, but they do work within the shroud. You know, the, the pole needs to be metal and putting them inside, that would be a problem. You know, the top antenna is, I guess, and I refer to it as more of an omni-directional antenna, where, uh, you know, it's not actually inside the pole itself, it's actually an antenna that's attached to the top of the pole. So, that little equipment shroud there, uh, you see centerline of proposed antennas, twenty-two, three, five inches, uh, that would, that is in a shroud, but that would be wider than the pole itself. You can see the diameter is called out, just to the left.
This is David, do you have a detailed drawing of that you can show us?
Good question. Right there. Can you see that? I'm looking at sheet A two, uh, in the center. Can you see that, David?
David, you have that?
Y- yes, I can, I, uh, uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I get anything further?
Uh, no, sir, thank you.
Okay, real quick, uh, because, uh, she's bouncing between two meetings. Kristen Kastner had a question, Kristen?
Question was the same as next.
Okay, very good. Um, moving on, Selectman Hogan, anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Selectman Runyon?
I'm good here, Jim.
Okay, now, we're gonna turn this over to the public. Mr. Sagrino, any, uh, anything before we move to the public? Any, any, did you wanna mention anything?
I don't have anything further, uh, Selectman Tigges.
Thank you. So, we're gonna open it up to the public, um, it's gonna be difficult to recognize everybody, so please bear with us. But again, uh, following up with my opening statement, with respect to what has been previously mentioned, if there is anyone in the public who would like to speak regarding this matter that is not related to environmental and health effects of radio frequency emissions, please make yourself known, and we will get you in to ask your questions.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Ruth Rinn has a question.
Ruth, why don't you go ahead and, uh, we'll try to answer those questions that weren't answered. Go ahead, Ruth. Ruth, are you muted?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I actually have two questions, and I hope both will be answered. The first one is, does Burlington have a board-approved long-term policy on 5G? Is there an upper limit for the number of small cells it would permit to be installed? And if no such policy exists, will there be one this year, and who will be responsible for drafting it? That's the first question. Shall I go on with the second one? Okay. If, if the town decides to permit 5G to be installed on the roofs of private homes as the telecom companies are pushing strongly for, what criteria will be used to grant those permits? Is there a policy in place to mitigate health and safety concerns that neighbors may have? And will input from neighbors be taken into account when considering those permits? And since health liability is uninsurable, how will the town deal financially with any lawsuits that might result from homeowners or neighbors?
Ruth, that's about ten questions wrapped up into two. Anyone smarter than me wanna take on any of those ten previously asked questions?
I'm not smarter than you, but I have some answers.
Okay, well, why don't you, Dawn, if you don't mind, answer those that you can answer, and then we'll try to take away the, uh, the list.
Sure. So, to take the second grouping of questions first, uh, yes, there is a, uh, policy in place and a bylaw in place if there is a proposal to put any antennas on private property. They will have to go through the planning board, and it follows the exact same process that we're doing here. The exact same aesthetic standards apply. Uh, for liability for any lawsuits that are resulting from complaints from people who claim to be suffering, it's gonna be no different from any other town infrastructure that somebody claims will cause them harm, and it would be an insured claim. Uh, on your first point about, or your first grouping of questions on the number of, limit on the number of small wireless facilities and a long-term policy, there is currently no limit on the number of small wireless facilities that can go in. I am not certain that any such policy would be effective or legal, because the FCC has said that towns must, uh, they cannot prohibit or effectively prohibit the, uh, the infrastructure, the, the service. So, a limit on the number of small wireless facilities in town could potentially be viewed by a court or by the FCC as prohibiting or effe- having the effect of prohibiting the service. But certainly, uh, as these things, uh, come online, and there are more applications, that's something that the town will be considering, whether there is redundancy among the small wireless facilities that had, have already been approved at that point, and whether in fact further facilities are necessary.
Thank you, Donna. I just wanna make a quick note, did I know Kristen Russo, and then Jack Kelly, both have, said they have questions. So, I wanna make sure you two are acknowledged, that we know you wanna ask questions. Ruth, any of your questions go unanswered?
Um, well, I, I got the answers. I'm, I don't necessarily like them, but I got the answers, thank you.
And you know what, Ruth, I'm, you know, I concur with you on some ideas. What we may like and what we may wanna do, or sometimes what we can and cannot do, can or cannot do, so, but we do what we can.
Thank you.
Kristen Russo?
Thank you. Uh, I just wanna say quickly, thank you for everybody's time. It's greatly appreciated. I greatly appreciate listening to the discussion, the different location ideas that were being passed around, um, over the past couple of meetings. I've learned much more, so, moving forward, hopefully it, it, um, helps a bit. So, I appreciate everybody's input and time. Um, these, I think, i- it sounds like it's getting approved. So, these questions, I, I don't know if they are already in the bylaw, if it's something that becomes, um, approval with condition. So, um, I have three questions, and I think it's just three, not a lot wrapped up in three. Do you want us to go individually, or?
One, yeah, one at a time, please.
Okay, so, the, my first question is if, like, right now, the, who, um, you know, is going, come out in 2022 or expected after two years' worth of studies? There are a number of cities and municipalities who have cases, um, that are being tried. Like, how, if, if anything comes out to change the town's standing or the ch- town's ability to approve or, or deny these, or relook at them? Um, are we able, like, is that in our bylaw? Or are we able to put into this approval, uh, statement saying, you know, depending on, uh, court case, we are able to, or we will bring this application back before the board?
Very good question. Attorney Brewer?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, thank you. I was expecting a long legal answer. Perfect, thank you, thank you.
Kristen, real quick, we, I, I can only speak for myself, but I don't think this board would let anything go forward that we couldn't revisit for one reason or another, so I'll just leave it at that. But question number two.
Um, so, question number two. Oh, uh, question number two has to do with, um, a question I asked earlier with regard to yearly testing, if the town would be able to. Um, right now, we just have one site, but, you know, we're, we're hearing that other, um, companies might be coming in, especially if, you know, we have three of these sites, and it's all within, let's say, this bus stop area. Is yearly testing something that needs to be put into a, a condition? Or is that something that the town will be able to do? We, we test our gas pumps, our deli scales, you know, it's, it's something that we test our water, those results are put out. We have the alcohol compliance, um, testing. So, you know, i- is this something that has to be put with the application? Or is it something that the town would be able to do moving forward as we see needed?
Mr. Sagrino?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think we posed this question to Mr. Maxon, so he may be able to, um, uh, better answer that question.
Mr. Maxon?
Yes, thank you. Um, uh, there, there's sort of two sides to that coin. Uh, the one side is that, uh, I send one of my people up to Linfield four times a year to measure something that hasn't changed in a dozen years. Uh, w- we know from the way these facilities are designed, uh, how they function. So, the most important thing is what you have now, which is the specifications and the analysis that the applicant has provided, uh, consistent with FCC rules, and then my verification of that analysis. Uh, but what I do recommend, and I think, uh, you may find this in the draft decision, is that, uh, the town reserve the right to, uh, rather than require an annual measurement, um, which often sort of falls by the wayside, people forget about it, and it doesn't get done. Uh, but rather to reserve the right to inquire whenever the town or the code enforcement official has a concern. So, that that could be twice in one year and not again for two years. Um, and at that point, uh, the, uh, eh, the, the calculations can be done. The disclosure of any changes they've made to the equipment that they might not have notified the town about can be disclosed. Um, and if necessary, uh, a set of field measurements can be made. And, uh, only in situations where it, it looks like it's a close call, do we really need to go out and make field measurements. Um, uh, but that's something that's decided on a case-by-case basis. So, I think you'll, you'll see some language, uh, in the decision that, uh, addresses that concern and gives the town the flexibility to, uh, to enforce the safety regulations.
Kristen Russo, did that answer?
Um, yes, it, so, if we start to see a lot in this area, would that, at some point, be a, a question? The town might say, hey, can you take a quick look, or, or no?
Yeah, i- i- yes, I think that's, that's exactly it, if things are looking, uh, uh, squirrely. Now, the other thing is that whenever an applicant is evaluating emissions, they're not just evaluating their own emissions, they're evaluating the combined emissions of all relevant sources. So, it's the com- combination of all of those emitters that have to comply with the safety standards, uh, at, at any given point on publicly accessible, uh, space.
Okay, so if another company came in, they have to include AT&amp;T's cell data with theirs?
Yes.
Perfect, I didn't realize that, thank you.
So, number three.
And then my last question, um, I, I think this might go to Brewer, or it might already be in our bylaws. So, if we move on to 6G or some total other type of technology, um, do we have a condition or something that says, when this is no longer being used, this equipment will be removed, the whole pole comes or goes away?
Yeah, that, uh, that is already in our policy, and, uh, so that, that is in there. But we don't even have 5G yet, so I'm holding out for 6G.
It, it just seems to change very rapidly, so. Okay. I am, thank you again for your time tonight.
From Mr. Kelly?
Uh, thank you, Jim. Uh, two questions. One, uh, Mr. Pear had mentioned that a metal pole interferes with his signal, or AT&amp;T's signal. If another carrier comes in and, are they then prohibited from installing a pole that interferes with his? Or are they going to share poles? That's the first question.
Yeah, eh, eh, yeah, these poles are not really conducive for colocation and sharing like that, uh, with all of the equipment inside. All, most of the pole is being eaten up by AT&amp;T. Uh, so, you know, the carriers are well-aware of, you know, what interferes and what doesn't. So, it's, you know, there needs to be some kind of separation that will be taken into account as those carriers come in. So, they may not wanna be within fifty feet of us, uh, at the same elevation, uh, but they may very well work at a hundred feet away. So, you know, that's something, just like with our, you know, with our macro sites and towers and rooftops, uh, we don't typically run interference issues, because, you know, the carrier's going to propose something that will work for them. Um, the issue on the metal was just to have the antenna shooting into the metal, it was just deadening RF signal in that particular direction. But, uh, yeah, we're fine with, with the proposed location. You know, like, you know, as I said earlier, there are, you know, there, there's a lot more due diligence that needs to take place. Uh, you know, in looking at the location, there are a couple of storm drains there. So, you know, we may have to make some adjustments, uh, you know, as far as the equidistant, uh, separation, placing the pole itself between, uh, the, you know, two light poles. Uh, you know, electricity may be closer from one direction rather than the other. So, it was good, we're gonna have to do some planning and work with engineering and, you know, Paul's office undoubtedly, to make sure that this works for us, uh, and that, you know, you could pick location D, but none of us have any idea what the location D is, is even feasible. Uh, you know, when you look at the Google Earth, there are two storm drains there. I have no idea whether, you know, we can bring electricity around those, we may have to, you know, be short of the storm drains. Uh, but that's just something that, you know, we can deal with engineering-wise.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Jack Kelly, do you have a second question?
Uh, a follow-up to that, so it sounds like the company that first, the carrier that first gets in, that gets their pick, is there some part of the policy that equitably allows the various carriers to get a fair shot at spaces? Or does the first carrier in get the pick and basically have veto over others being near them?
Well, it's not a veto, so they would have to, they would have to come in and propose a location, uh, you know, this location- Well, it's not a veto, so they would have, they would have to come in and propose a location, uh, you know, this location D is not our preference. So, it's not as though we're coming in and then blocking other carriers. We're working with the town. It's the, you know, we understand it's the first, you know, installation, um, you know, that we're proposing. We know there are going to be others, uh, but it's unlikely that one of our competitors would want that exact location. My guess is they'll want something somewhere in the area, but, you know, we're not so, you know, tight with respect to coverage that they, they would want the exact location. And we just can't put that much equipment inside one pole. So, if you're, if you want the equipment inside and to make it, you know, less visually intrusive than, you know, colocation, you know, just not, you know, in the carriage, if you want to do a mini monopole there and, you know, have a number of carriers hanging that, the tenors off. Uh, again, not, not very, it, I just don't see that as being very practical. So, uh, it's not that, say Verizon can't come in and, you know, install somewhere else once they prove their case to, to this board or to the, uh, planning board if, if applicable.
Mr. Kelly, any follow-up or second?
Yeah, uh, yes. Uh, you, you've gone through, uh, a rather detailed discussion as to why this particular location D is better than A, B, and C. But when a subsequent carrier comes in, uh, they're going to have to look at A, B, and C, which were not your preference. I don't know how you're going to deal with that. That's a rhetorical question, so I don't look for an answer. The, uh, second question is one that I raised last time, and I hope I can get a pretty clear answer. Within the equipment, the pole and the equipment underground or associated equipment, can we get a clear answer that all components and subcomponents, any part, is fully acceptable to the US military and the United States government?
I, I believe that's been our policy, Jack, but Mr. Perry, did you want to?
Well, that says, that says, I, I, I'm not sure how the policy is written because I couldn't get a copy of it, Jim. So, I, I think what we need, uh, Mr. Perry to answer, that he can say definitively, yes, that all components and subcomponents are acceptable to the US military and the United States government.
I, I, I could tell you they're accepted. The FCC, which I supplied to the board, just issued a list of, uh, equipment providers that are, I guess, banned for lack of a better term, or at least blocked from doing business. AT&amp;T does not use any of those vendors either at this location or in any of its locations. But your, your question is incredibly broad, so I, I don't know that I can provide an answer. I don't know what the US military has to do with our, you know, components, but we will comply with a whole click of old federal law regulations, and if it's, whether it's the FCC or the FAA, if it's applicable to our installation, AT&amp;T will comply with it.
Mr. Kelly?
The, the question, again, he told me what he's not going to use, not what he is going to use. So, I, I think that in order to guard against a a, a way around that, that there'd be something in any decision that you write that makes it very clear that any component or subcomponent shall be acceptable to the US military and the United States government, not just the FCC.
Jim, may I?
Yes, uh, Mr. Hogan, go ahead. And Christian, I know you have a question.
If I may read this, Jack, uh, or everybody, the applicant confirms that no equipment will be used that is manufactured by a company on the US Department of Commerce entity list as a company that is deemed to be, by the US government, to be undermining US interests. That's the statement that we will be using in the finding. So, that's, that's the wording.
Yeah, I'm concerned about a subcomponent, Bob. It gets stuck into, uh, something that is some new manufacturer basically puts, slaps a label on something that isn't, uh, or includes in it a subcomponent that is otherwise not acceptable.
Okay. I don't have an answer for that.
Yeah, uh, is, but if, if the decision can cover that, uh, that would be helpful. Thank you.
If we could have one of the legal councils clarify, that'd be good.
Mr. Kelly, any further questions?
No, that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Christian, you had a question regarding median? About upgrading median?
What did you say?
Did you have a question about upgrading the median? Thought I saw that in the chat.
Yeah, yeah. No, I just had some, I, at the chat, I just had some conditions I think you guys should consider in your approval. Um, but then, just the Burlington, I mean, uh, the planning board has been working for a while with area, um, businesses and upgrades of the median. Uh, Burlington Mall Road Beautification Project, and I just wasn't sure if, in the agreement with the town for the locations where these are, how much real estate within the median, um, is being, you know, is controlled then by AT&amp;T where this pole is? And, um, to, I think, um, uh, Donna Brewer responded that there is no lease. Um, but anyway, I just want to make sure that all the efforts that we're trying to move forward on the Burlington Mall median, you know, you guys with the ornamental lighting, but also landscaping plans, um, to not have kind of those cement paved islands and really create that streetscape up and down the middle of the median. Um, so if where these poles are, we just want to make sure that, um, one, um, can AT&amp;T help to contribute to those efforts? And then the second, to make sure that where their areas are doesn't inhibit us from moving forward with that project. Just kind of FYI to know, just things that we want to make sure are encompassed, your kind of approvals of this moving forward. And being, you know, we're, we're used to kind of private property and, um, plans and conditions. So, however that manifests with your approvals, that's fine. I just wanted to bring it up and ask those questions.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Is that something, uh, you're able to answer or?
Yep, I can. So, you know, these are in the public right of way, so we're technically seeking a grant of location from the board, just as any other utility company or utility pole would, uh, you know, like, I don't know if you, if it's National Grid in the area, but, you know, if they were to put in a wooden pole, they would come to the board of selectmen and get a grant of location. So, uh, with respect to fee, I mean, first of all, there's no landscaping proposed. Well, we're going to be in the cement island if we go to, you know, location, if the board approves location D and we're able to install location D, uh, we'll be in the, look like a cement median, so there'll be no, uh, landscaping. There's nothing to landscape. It'll just be the pole base, just like any other light pole. So, it'll be very similar to what's there. Uh, with respect to fees, the FCC has dictated what the allowable fees are. There are fees that can be charged by the town for applications. There are fees that can be charged on an annual basis for, I think they call it managing the public right of way. So, we run into lots of towns, uh, placing, uh, annual fees of $270 on our, our locations. Uh, so that's something that the town could certainly, uh, review with legal counsel, but, you know, as I see in the chat here, there is no lease. Uh, you know, we're a grant of location like any other infrastructure provider. Uh, in this case, it would be someone owning the infrastructure. Uh, AT&amp;T's not going to own the infrastructure, so we'll use, you know, utility company provider that's, uh, licensed by the PUC to, uh, own the pole. AT&amp;T, it'll be designed for us, so we have no problem with, you know, the color being, I think, black was proposed. You know, all of those sort of things are aesthetics, which are not problematic. Uh, but additional fees, uh, as I said, I think the FCC already covers that. I defer to Donna Brewer on that issue.
Thank you. Christian, does that answer your question?
I think as much as we can at this point, yep.
Attorney Brewer, I have a quick question. If this gets approved, whether it be A, B, C, or D, say we theoretically picked A, and AT&amp;T finds out it's not going to work, how does that affect this application?
It doesn't affect the application, it affects the decision. So, uh, the decision then would ha, we would have to come back and modify the decision to approve a new site, which is why, uh, I think it was Mr. Perry who suggested that we should, if we're looking at doing an approval, we should have a couple of sites, uh, approved for, so that you have a backup, so you don't have to come back with a new hearing day uh, to modify the decision, that you could approve, you know, uh, uh, location D. But then if for some reason D does not work because of the drains or, or whatever else, then you are giving secondary approval to location C or A or B.
Okay, so we should include alternate or backup locations in the decision?
I, I, I would recommend that, that will, that will hopefully save you from having to have a, another public hearing to modify, to approve a location that you're willing to approve and know will work today.
Okay, thank you. We also have another question from the public. Uh, Mr. Perloff, James Perloff.
Uh, yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, um, I've been, uh, at the previous meeting and, uh, I spoke at that time, uh, was a registered nurse in Massachusetts for 45 years, uh, now retired. Um, I did send a letter to the board of selectmen a couple of weeks ago, and at that time, I provided some references, uh, related to safety. I pointed out that, uh, there were, uh, many, many peer-reviewed studies pointing out the harm that Wi-Fi and 4G have caused to cancer, to heart irregularities. Um, I pointed out that, uh, and I gave the link, uh, to the, to the congressional testimony. Uh, the, um, FCC and telecommunications representatives admitted to Senator Richard Blumenthal of Connecticut that not a single safety test has ever been conducted on 5G, which is operated at much higher levels, uh, and frequencies than 4G.
Mr. Perloff, if I might interrupt?
Yes.
At the beginning of the meeting and, and prior to the public, uh, being, being open to the public, um, the discussion, uh, we cannot take into consideration any environmental or health effects of radio frequency emissions. So, that was the whole idea of opening up to the public so that we could just discuss anything that is not related to environmental and health. Is, is, is personally, you know, that may, 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 may or may not seem right to someone. At this meeting, we cannot base our decision on environmental or health effects. So, the, the discussion, do you have questions or anything about, anything not related to environmental or health effects?
No, I would just say that, to me, health is, uh, of the utmost concern. I would put that as my first priority. Uh, speaking as a registered nurse, uh, for 45 years, uh, it's very disappointing to me under the other communities and even countries have banned or placed a moratorium on 5G over health concerns. Uh, I would seriously like to see this, uh, policy then changed, uh, in Burlington as, so that this is given precedence. The FCC has not done a safety test on, uh, 5G since 1996. We had 2G. Um, I consider it, uh, uh, that the, uh, telecommunications industry is, uh, uh, not exerted, uh, due diligence in, uh, uh, doing safety tests on what we're proposing implementing tonight, but I, I believe what you're saying, you can't discuss health. But speaking as professional, I consider that abominable. Um, the health of the residents of Burlington should come first uh, above appearance, uh, or location of this small cell tower and, oh, there, there are great implications for the, for the future. Um, if this, these towers are, uh, eventually being, uh, put outside our homes, um, instead of being a half mile away or a mile away where cell towers are now. Anyway, I'm sorry to bring up a subject that was banned, but, uh, I'm just expressing my concern, and I hope that that's.
You don't have to apologize for it.
Yep.
Anything further? Do we have anybody else from the public who wants to make a comment regarding this? Okay. Mr. Sagrino, we see any further request from the public?
Uh, there are no, no hands raised, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then I believe it would be appropriate if there's a motion to close the public hearing.
Uh, excuse me, there's no comments on Facebook, just for the record.
Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Selectman Runyon made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Sorry, Bob, I think you seconded, but I, you're muted. Uh, Mr. Hogan seconded. Okay, so there's a, uh, motion, uh, and it's seconded to close the public hearing. A roll call to close the public hearing. Uh, Vice Chairman Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
And the chair, is he a yes? So, it's 4-0-1, uh, 4-0, Selectman Miranda has refused himself. All right, members of the board of selectmen. Now, we have to consider where, what, we, how we want to proceed from this point on. Oh, I will start again with the vice chair?
Wait a minute. Quick, may I ask a question before we go any further? What specific votes are we being asked to make at this time, Attorney Brewer, and how many different votes will there be?
Attorney Brewer?
Uh, so, you should make a motion to cons, to approve the application conditioned upon a, a number of, of points, and then I would recommend that you have separate votes on conditions.
Okay. And the location would be one of those conditions?
It would.
Okay.
All right, so, that being the case, do we have a motion to create a hierarchical system of locations? In other words, a priority of preferred locations?
May, may I back up first? If I heard Attorney Brewer, should the first thing we do is to make the motion to approve the application
switch it?
Conditioned upon the following, uh, uh, points?
Yes.
Okay, so.
All right.
All right, so.
All right, I will do that first, Mr. Chairman. I will make the initial motion that we approve the application conditioned upon the number of points we're going to vote on after this. But I, I'm going to make the motion that we approve the application.
Okay, subject to the following conditions?
Yes.
Do you want to itemize the conditions and we'll do them one at a time?
Well, I think we should have, we should vote on the first motion, which is the application itself. If, did I hear you correctly, Attorney Brewer?
Yeah, so I'd say the first motion should be that you're going to approve the application, uh, subject to conditions that will be separately voted on after you vote on this motion.
Okay. Is there some move on that?
That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second, my Mr. Priest. Okay, we will go, uh, again, Vice Chairman Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, so 4-0, to approve with conditions to be stated.
All right, if I, if, you went through with that?
I am. Mr. Hogan?
All right, if I, if I may, the first condition I would do would be to clarify the order of the locations to put the poles. Uh, in the order that I have is D first, C second, A third, and B fourth.
Any discussion on that? Mr. Priest?
Um, is there any flavor to order it and, and possibly even not consider, uh, B or C? But to perhaps only say, uh, D is a, is a first location and then A as an alternate location? Knowing that we may run into right-of-way issues or ADA compliance issues, and, I mean, yes, the installation remains maybe a little bit easier in terms of flow of traffic and whatnot, but perhaps, you know, center medians are, are the way to go here.
Uh, Attorney Brewer, do you think it would be appropriate to ask Mr. Perry if two locations would suffice?
If, if how many locations? Two?
Two.
Yes. Um, you, you know, I, I think if, if two locations is what the board wants, uh, just go ahead and make that your condition.
Okay, uh, Mr. Perry's nodding, so I'm assuming that he's okay with, with that. So, Nick, um, so, Mr.?
You'll need to, that's fine. You'll need to, uh, second the amendment.
Okay, we need, Nick, uh, so we need to second the amendment, but, um, Nick, was that being offered as an amendment or a discussion?
If, if Bob was making an official motion, then yes, that would be an amendment to his, uh, to his motion.
Okay, do we have a second to Nick's?
Go ahead for discussion.
Okay, Bob, is that a second?
No, I, that was my motion, but I'm saying get a second for discussion.
Okay, I needed a second for discussion before that amendment.
Uh, Jim, I'll, I'll second, I'll second, uh, the motion for discussion, but I'd like to add something.
Okay.
In, in a minute.
Okay, so, get Mr. Hogan.
Go ahead. No, I was going to say, if you accept that motion, I'll have something to say.
Go ahead, no, I was gonna say, if you accept that motion, I'll have something to say.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded for discussion. Uh, Selectman Priest has offered an amendment. I'm just trying to get my, my, uh, my lay, uh, my, uh, flow going here. This is only my second meeting as chairman, so bear with me.
Okay.
All right, so Nick has offered an amendment. Do we have a second? Am I looking for a second to that amendment?
Yes, please.
Okay, do I have a second to, uh, Chairman, Vice Chairman Priest's amendment?
Uh, Nick, would you, would you repeat the amend, the amendment for me, please? Sorry.
Sure thing, yeah. So the amendment was that, um, we would only consider two locations, those being D as the primary location and A being the secondary location.
Okay, okay, fine, I'm, I'm perfectly happy to second that amendment.
Okay, so the amendment is, the condition is to limit or allow two locations, the first being D as shown on the map, with an alternate of A as shown on the map. So that's the amended and it's been seconded. So I think we're voting to approve that condition.
It, just to be clear, that D is the primary, uh, selection and A is the secondary selection?
I use the word alternate, but secondary works fine, so primary and secondary is good. So do I have a motion to approve that condition?
That was Nick's motion and, and Michael's seconded.
I'm sorry, all right, so let's do a vote. Uh.
No, no, got a discussion first.
Okay, discussion on that amendment.
Well, why don't we do the first one first?
No, you have to do this amendment one first, then you can go back to the made motion.
Correct. So the amended motion is two locations, D as primary, A as secondary. Any discussion on that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
If, if I might, um, to the amendment, I would like to add that location D, if necessary, um, that, that we modify, uh, uh, location D to be less equidistant and allow some flexibility there, should we, uh, you know, I don't want to tie, uh, necessarily tie this up to the, uh, you know, exactly sixty feet or, or whatever, but I, but I'd like to, uh, allow some flexibility and modify the amendment to allow some flexibility in the, uh, equidistant, uh, bylaw that we have.
Okay, Mr. Sagrino, if I'm not mistaken, it says equidistant when possible, or something along those lines?
To the greatest extent possible.
Does that, Attorney Brewer, does that allow for, um, uh, variance, or do we need to include Selectman Runyon's comments, do you think?
Uh, so you would need to include the flexibility in the condition, but as a matter of procedure, it's not a good idea to have, to be considering more than one amendment at a time. So if the board is leaning toward allowing some flexibility for part D, you should vote down the amendment and then submit a new amendment that is more along the lines of what Se- Selectman Runyon has, uh, suggested.
Nick, would you, would you maybe uh, include such language in your, in, in your amendment, uh, that, that, uh, allows the, uh, the board a little bit of, uh, flexibility? Should we, should, should we learn that, uh, manholes or, or, uh, wastewater or, or, or other infrastructure is in the way to allow for some flexibility?
Uh, I, I'd be happy to if, if, because it's been moved and seconded though, I believe we have to vote it down and then just make the.
Do I have a motion to approve the amendment?
I think that motion's been made. You've got to.
A motion to deny? I mean, how do we?
No, so you have to. Yeah, you just have to take a vote on the amended motion.
Okay.
On the amendment to the motion.
Uh, Selectman Priest?
All right, so I'm, I'm voting this down so that we can remake the.
Right. All right, Selectman Hogan?
No.
Selectman Runyon?
Okay, no.
And the chair's a no as well, so it's zero four, zero four on that amendment. Selectman Priest? Round two.
All right, so with Selectman Hogan's, uh, motion on the table, I would like to, uh, propose an amendment, uh, that we, uh, select two locations, D being the primary and A being the secondary, with the, uh, opportunity for flexibility in the placement of pole D, uh, pending any infrastructure, uh, concerns.
So I, I recommend that you have the motion identify who makes the decision about where the final location is. Who are you giving that flexibility to? And how much flexibility are you willing to give? Do you want to, uh, say that it, it can be moved within three feet of where the pin is shown on the map, or five feet, uh, but I, I'd like a little bit more specificity as to who is giving the flexible, um, location, approving flexible location.
Okay, so then I would add that we would offer flexibility of, we'll say, five feet in either direction, uh, as it maintains the median, um, and approved and authorized by the Select Board.
A point of order, uh, maybe the attorney can help me with this. Um, as a consultant, am I able to assist with wording something like this?
Yes.
Please. Okay, I would rec, I would recommend plus or minus fifteen feet.
Okay, I'm happy to, uh, say plus or minus fifteen feet in either direction, uh, with the rest still standing.
Okay, so that's the amended motion. Do I have a second to that with the plus or minus fifteen feet?
Second.
Second by Selectman Runyon. Okay, this is a vote on the first condition, which is the location. So, Selectman Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
No.
Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
And the chair was a yes. So three, one on that one, Betty. Do I have a motion for a second condition?
At this point, I'd recommend that you look through the conditions in the draft decision, and you, if you're fine with including all of those, then I would recommend that you do a, um, uh, global, uh, motion to approve the conditions in the draft decision, which should be read into the, into the record or shared by a screen, so people see them.
Okay, Attorney, uh, Attorney Brewer, uh, Nick has a question, but I just want to clarify one thing. One of the potential, um, conditions, and Nick, I apologize if this is what you're gonna ask, references certain exhibits. Um, how do we address that potential condition?
So, uh, rather than be exhibits, they would be sheet identifi- identifiers. I think the pole shall be of the design that's set forth on sheet A two, I think is what it was. And as for the, um, was there another condition that had a? I think that's probably one that.
One, one. All right, Mr. Perry, was that A two, sheet A two? A is an apple?
For the design?
The exhibit number.
Perry?
He's muted.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
The, uh, exhibitor, uh, or page you showed earlier, that showed that design, what is that identified as a page number?
A one.
A one? Okay, so it would be A one. So, am I looking for a global motion, the remaining conditions, which should be read at this point?
Uh, or we can sh- screen share them so that everybody can read them.
Okay, Mr. Perry, we're good, we have A one, uh, there.
Mm-hmm.
Betty, would you have the potential conditions available to share?
Attorney Brewer, has that the decision that you submitted?
It, it is. If you, I have it if you want to allow me to share.
You, you may, and if you're not able to do it, I have it as well. You go.
No, you can go ahead, because right now I'm still grayed out.
Okay.
Sharing.
While, while that's happening, Mr. Chairman, um, I do have one question I'd like to ask Attorney Brewer. Um, Donna, with regard to the conditions that you had, uh, sent over, I, I thought they were, uh, well put together. Um, I wanted to just to kind of refer to the last condition, uh, as it pertains to uh, operating violation of any safety code, yada, yada, yada. Um, do, do we feel like with, with pending litigation, it's something that worked right now against the FCC, and I'll reference Boston for the time being, because it's, you know, in our backyard or where it's backyard, however you like to look at it. Um, would it be worthwhile to, to put a condition in place that should, pending our future litigation, you know, uh, render any new information, uh, that, you know, we'd be allowed to, um, you know, revisit the application?
So, uh, a couple of thoughts, and we're already calling them, him back annually because that's in our policy, that there has to be a renewal, uh, at which time you, you have the right to do that. Secondly, if the standards change, either through a court decision or, uh, new FCC standards, uh, it's going to be a requirement of law that the, uh, applicant comply with that new standard. And so that was the point of this condition as written, which was written at the suggestion of, uh, Mr. Maxson, that we, uh, word it this way, so that if he's in violation of any standard that will apply for whatever reason, then, um, the board deserves the right to reconsider this decision.
Yes, it is. Data, may I just amplify on that? One of the concerns expressed by some of the residents was that the, um, uh, let's say hypothetically that, uh, uh, the town or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, uh, in the courts somehow, uh, regains the right to regulate these facilities. At that point, the regulation would be town or state regulation, and it would still be applicable to this clause. Um, yeah, I think it's, it's very unlikely that that'll ever happen because of the position the federal government takes, but, um, the way it's worded, it preserves the town's right regardless of who has the authority to regulate.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Maxson. Thank you, Donna. Um, uh, Mr. Chairman, I saw, uh, Ms. Caser's hand go up. I didn't know if we, uh, she had something to say.
Okay, I, I missed that one. Uh, Kristen, did you have something?
Oh, yeah, no, I just had a con, I just, I had a couple suggestions for conditions in the chat. Um, and just, a lot of them just kind of citing type conditions and general conditions, and I just wanted to, um, see if they could, or some of them could potentially be added to the decision.
So what I was hoping we could do, Kristen, is go through the ones that are in the draft decision already, and then go through your conditions in the chat, because I think that it, you made a good point, and we should add them.
Okay, no problem, just wanted to highlight it before you decided to vote. Thanks, thanks.
Thank you. Um, Donna, would it be appropriate to have someone read each condition or displays enough?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to read on the shared screen, so it would probably make sense, and, and Betty, I think you want to advance the next page to, to go to the conditions, which I think are on page, start on page three.
Yep, right there at the.
There, right there. You got them there. So, but they're kind of hard to read, so if somebody can, um, read them.
Okay, do I have, uh, someone who would be willing to read those?
Would it make sense to read them en masse, and we can hold any for discussion like we typically do with?
That'd be good if you want, if I get someone to read them all, then we can, Donna, would it be appropriate to approve these conditions and they go to Kristen's?
Right.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask that someone read the, these conditions, and then we'll take a vote for approval or denial. After that, we will then consider Kristen Kastner's, uh, conditions.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm happy to read them. I just wanted to be clear, so what, what I can do is I can read, um, each one and then pause if anyone would like to hold for discussion before we move into an approval, if that is, uh, the board.
That's fine with me.
Okay, all right, so then I will kick this off. Uh, the applicant shall conform its installation to the plans and specifications set forth in its application as amended and as further set forth in this decision. The poll shall be of the design set forth in, uh, on sheet A two, I'm sorry, A one. The applicant shall comply with the annual recertification and affidavit requirements set forth in paragraph three of the application policy for small cell wireless installations. The applicant shall ensure that there is no disruption of electrical service to the town's streetlights during installation of the pole or any work on the pole thereafter. The pole will be serviced by electrical service separate from that of the town. The applicant will pay the town five hundred dollars for processing each annual recertification and two hundred and seventy dollars annually for the use of the right of way. The applicant shall not replace or alter the equipment permitted by this decision unless it files a new application and approval that is obtained from the Board of Selectmen, unless the equipment is no longer properly functioning and is being replaced with the same or substantially similar equipment. The applicant shall respond within thirty days to any requests by the Board of Selectmen or the code enforcement official to verify the emissions of the small wireless facility, uh, remain compliant with SEC standards. If at any time the facility is operating in violation of any safety code or health standard, the owner shall cure the violation within a reasonable time based on the severity of the risk, but in no case more than three days from notification by the town, at which time the board reserves the right to reconsider this decision and any subsequent extension. The installation and maintenance of the pole shall not cause any disruption to nearby municipal facilities and equipment. And I believe that is all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve based on the conditions that have been read into the record, or Attorney Brewer, should I have? Should we take a motion to approve now and then do Kristen's? I'm trying to think how we, I don't want to approve it and then add new conditions.
Yeah, no, we've, you know, we've already approved one condition, which is locations. So I think you can go ahead and approve these conditions as read by Selectman Priest, and then go on to further, uh, conditions as well. We're not foreclosing adding other conditions.
Okay, great. So I'll ta- entertain a motion to approve these conditions.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Perry, Perry, Perry.
I, I know the public hearing is closed, but just procedurally, you approved the design on A one. I assume you do not want the lights attached to the pole.
Oh, good point.
Yes, good, yes, that is correct. So, um, Nick, how do we do this without going through everything?
Amen, I would recommend amending that condition.
Mr. Priest, do you want to amend that one slightly?
I'd like to, uh, go ahead and just amend the, that, that particular condition that I read into, uh, the record, uh, by revising it to say the pole shall be, uh, of the design set forth in A one sands the, uh, lumineers as shown, and that it will only be, uh, the pole itself.
How about we use without the light instead of sands the lumineers? Does that work?
Second.
Thank you, Michael. Okay, with that being said, uh, this is a vote to approve those conditions stated by Mr. Priest.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, uh, Selectman Runyon said second, but did anybody actually make the official motion on what I read? Cuz I was just reading.
No, no, I don't think we did, because Mr. Perry, uh, interjected. Yes, Mr. Hogan. You're muted. You're muted, Bob.
Are we voting first, uh, Attorney Brewer on the amendment to have the, uh, exhibit A one without the lights, and then vote the others?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll vote first to amend, um, the condition referencing the lights in, in page one, um, sorry, referencing page A one without the lights.
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second.
Okay.
Selectman Runyon, all those in favor of the amendment of ref- with regards to the reference of page A one that excludes the lights? Uh, Selectman Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, so four zero on the amendment with reference to the condition on, uh, that points to page A one. Okay, now I think we're, and correct me if I'm wrong, are we looking, I'm looking for a motion to approve the conditions as stated by Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second, I'm sorry, looking for a motion first.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Mr. Hogan made the motion, do I have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Mr. Priest, all right, this is to approve the conditions to include that amended dis- uh, amended condition as well, that we just voted on. All those in favor, Selectman Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, so four zero to approve the conditions as stated by Vice Chair Priest. Moving on to the conditions requested by Kristen Kastner, can we have those displayed, please?
So they're all, all in the chat, I can, um, if you'd like, I can read them, I, some of them are questions, some of them are conditions, but if you want, I can just read what I would suggest for conditions, and you guys can say, hold if you wanna hold it? If that's easier, I, they're not as, obviously, cuz they're in the chat, not as, uh,
Just a pointer, pointer of order, Attorney Brewer, would it be appropriate for Kristen to read them, or should a member of the board read them?
Well, she can read the conditions, and then somebody on the board would make the motion.
Okay, Kristen, if you wanna share them, and then read them, cuz I can't see them on this thing here.
Uh, they're in the chat, I can't share, um, I, I can't, I don't think I can share.
Can just read them?
But I'll just read them, so.
Alright.
Just, the, I mean, a lot of them are kind of clarifications, um, so the first, I think that the equipment should all be black in color. Um, and all the equipment shall be inside the pole with the exception of the antenna that we've discussed at twenty-two feet six inches. Um, all the ground equipment shall be, all the base equipment shall be, um, in the pole or underground. I'm sorry, what? Okay, sorry, I thought I heard something. Um, also, that it's black in color, I'm not sure if it comes black, or if it needs to be repainted, but we also, we wanna make sure that it maintains that black color. Um, the beautification project we talked about, um, the second piece is, I mean, you guys just voted mostly in the median, but if there are poles on the, um, edge of the right of way, that all poles and equipment, I believe, should be in, um, outside of the travelway or the sidewalk, and make sure that they give enough width for the snow pile, uh, in the winter to go by any of those equipment. Um, you guys already voted the design, but just to clarify, just to make su- I, I don't know, we do this in the planning board a lot, when the design is still kind of, generally, we understand the design, but final design to be reviewed and approved by the town administrator to ensure compliance with these rules and regs prior to installation. You guys can take that or leave that, I don't have an issue. Um, and, uh, and the last one is just the location, um, within the median, just should be careful, um, to make sure we're not blocking site distance, um, at the intersections, especially with the intersection at Lakey, where you're kind of on that hill. So, um, it looks like they're probably okay, but just make sure that that is the case when you decide on that final, um, location for installation. And that's all there are. So I appreciate the time to, an opportunity, thanks.
Thank you, Kristen, procedurally, Donna, how would we gr- uh, go forth with these?
So, given that it's not clear which of these conditions the board might want, I recommend taking them individually.
Okay.
So I'd say your fir- your first condition that you're going to ask for a motion on is, uh, that the pole shall be black in color, and, uh, that it shall be repainted as necessary to ensure that it remains black in color.
I would make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second for that?
Second.
Okay, uh, second by Mr. Priest. Um, all those in favor of that condition, Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Yeah.
And the chair is a yes, so four zero on that condition with regards to the color of the pole. Next condition would be?
The next condition would be that all the equipment shall be incorporated into the pole, and not outside of the pole with the exception of the antenna at twenty-two point six, or twenty-two six.
Ready, wanna move that?
Oh, that'll be my motion.
Alright, Bob's making the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Priest. Okay, we'll go to, vote on that condition. Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, so four zero on that condition. The next condition is?
Next condition is that all ground equipment shall be underground or in the base of the pole.
That's my motion.
Okay, Bob's making that motion, second. Is by Nick, okay, I'll, uh, I'm sorry. Select, uh, Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Uh, Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, so four zero on that condition. Next, uh, condition to be voted on is?
The beautification.
Donna, how did you have that one down?
Yeah, so this one, I'm not sure how you wanna word it, honestly, um, because.
I, I skipped over, so sorry to interrupt, but I skipped over that, you answered the question, because it's not a lease. Um, it's, it's your choice if you wanna add something in there, but, um, I'm not recommending, um, necessarily, I'm, at. So, we try to, um, ask all applicants on Mall Road to contribute to part of this project, it's not a you must. Um, but if there was ground equipment or a lease that would affect this, I would have said that they need to, um, comply with allowing us to do that. But there's no lease, it's just a right of way, so I guess I would withdraw that particular condition unless you guys wanna try to word, word it in a different way.
Nah, I don't think we can word it any better than you.
I, I, I will tell you, um, Mr. Chairman, and I think, uh, uh, Mr. Hogan will recall that there, there actually is a pool of money for, uh, that was, uh, authorized, uh, uh, eight or nine years ago, but it was further up the road at the South Bedford industry, in- intersection, and I believe that, that little woodchad still exists today. Um, uh, the intersection we're talking about today, however, um, i- i- is not affected, um, by that, uh, potential design.
Alright, so are we withdrawing that condition? Or not voting on that condition?
Yes.
Okay, so Donna, with that being, uh, not being voted on, what would the, the next condition be that we would?
The, the next condition will be that no poles or associated equipment and utilities are permitted to be in the travelway, that, no, we don't, we need that one. Neither one of the condition, uh, neither one of the locations is in the, in the sidewalk. So, we're okay with skipping that one.
Uh, may I, may I just say, we probably should have something in there, because what if something happens and we can't use D or whatever one we chose? Um, are we gonna have to have a public hearing to go back and?
You, you're gonna have to modify the decision, we're hoping that one of the two that you approved will work, uh, but if neither one of them does, we're gonna have to come back and modify the decision.
I have a question, please.
Yes, who's got the question, Betty?
Betty, um, Kristen, you mentioned that you want the final design of the pole and equipment to be reviewed and approved by the town administrator to ensure compliance with the rules and regulations prior to installation. Will you ask for that to be a motion?
I did, um, suggest that be a motion, but it, it's certainly up to you guys to take or leave.
And, and then you had it further down, so why, uh, why don't we recommend that the motion be that the final design of the pole and equipment shall be reviewed and approved by the town administrator in consultation with DPW and Engineering to ensure compliance with the rules and regs prior to installation?
Hey, that sounds good, do I have, uh, anybody wanting to move that one?
Before we do that, Mr. Chairman, uh, do we not already have something like that in the design rules and regs?
Yes, we do.
Yeah, I, I would agree with Mr. Priest, I think it's, uh, not, not applicable, I think we've already addressed that.
Okay. Uh, then the next condition for you to vote on would be that the pole location shall not block site distance at intersections.
Okay, do I have anybody, so move by, uh, Selectman Hogan, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by, uh, Vice Chair Priest? Okay, uh, let's see. Selectman, uh, Vice, Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Uh, Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes as well. That's the last condition, I believe?
It is.
Of, of, of Kristen's, Kristen, I wish, we should probably still discuss a couple of things.
Hey, what do you wanna discuss, Bob?
Oh, we talked about having as an option, who decides? Who's the final arbiter of whether D works and doesn't work, and you have to go to the next one? Uh, who ma- we, we didn't have that in there as to who makes that final decision? Would that be the town administrator and DPW and Engineering, or?
I, I thought you reserved that to the Selectmen.
I had.
Yeah, uh, Nick kinda mentioned that, I forget the wording.
That's in the motion.
So that means we have to come back and have, uh, a, a public hearing?
So.
Cuz, cuz I thought if we, if the town administrator and Engineering, they can do it in-house, rather than us having to open this whole thing up again.
You wouldn't need to whole, open the whole thing up again, uh, if, if location D works, then you're fine. But if location D doesn't work, and location A works, then you're fine as well. It's only if you are moving plus or minus fifteen feet that you'd have to come back. Again, you wouldn't need to open the whole thing up again, you would only be considering, um, moving it from either D or A as shown on the, on the map. Uh, but if, if you'd like to go back and amend that condition, so that the flexibility is given to the town administrator in consultation with the town engineer, you can do that.
Bob, did you wanna amend that, or?
Uh, well, for, for the sake of what we're discussing here, is that part of what we're talking about if we were giving the design to the final approval to the town administrator in conjunction with?
No, I, I, I don't understand, try that again, Bob, I, I lost that question.
Well, when we were talking about the right of way, the foot traffic and the final design, uh, cuz Betty had, uh, uh, chimed in and said, uh, that we're gonna have the discussion about our motion about the final design to be approved by the town administrator. Could we, would we also have interim decisions that have to be made, or does it have to come back to the full board each time?
Well, to, to me, it's two different things, the design is with the town administrator as it pertains to the, the, the design rules and regs, and then the, the, the site location was the one that I said should come back to us, uh, should A and D not work out.
Yeah, but it's still part of the design, because if D's not working, you gotta redesign it by putting A in.
Donna, is that?
So I don't know what, what decision we're gonna make that would be any smarter or different.
Why don't I just read the, um, I can read the, um, the motion back if you like.
Yes, please, Betty.
We select D as the primary site, and A as the secondary site, with the opportunity for flexibility for placement of pole D, pending any placement or concerns with the flexibility for pole A plus slash minus fifteen feet in either direction to maintain the meeting and authorized by the Select Board.
Bob, is, you satisfied with that, or?
Uh, I, I, yeah, yeah, just go ahead, just.
That's it.
Oh, that's all.
Bob, if you don't find it satisfactory, we can, we can talk about it amended.
Well, I don't, you know, I just wonder why we're having issues about making final decisions here, and we're, we've got different groups of people making decisions along the way, it should be consistent. It should be the people who do this work on a regular basis, the engineers, the DPW, with, with, with work from the town administrator. That's just my opinion.
With, with regard to placement.
Yes.
With regard to the location, the placement of location.
Look, I, I, I don't disagree with Bob, um, absolutely, um, you know, we, we rely heavily on our, uh, engineering department and our professionals in the town. Um, I, 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 I think we're in a good place with what we've done tonight. Um, let's let, uh, um, Mr. Perry and, and, and others, um, digest what we've, what we've, uh, discussed here tonight, and, um, if, if there's a hiccup in the, um, in, in our decision, then, uh, we can revisit it, uh, I, I think, I think, uh, that we've digested this, uh, long enough, I've certainly learned more about 5G than I ever cared to. Um, um, but, uh, I, I, I think we need, I, I think we need to move, I need to, we need to move this, uh, toward the goal line, and, um, if, uh, let, let's let the engineers and the consultants and the professionals, uh, digest what we've, what we've, uh, agreed upon tonight, and if there's a, you know, if there's a, if, if there's a bump in the road along the way, we come back and revisit it.
Donna, is that a possibility? To do exactly what Selectman Runyon said?
It, I'm sorry, is what a possibility?
If for some reason, this hits a, a roadblock, and notice, and, and not the works.
It.
What happens?
Yeah, so if neither D nor A works, um, with the flexibility of the plus or minus fifteen feet, then you are going to have to come back and amend your decision.
Okay, so.
But that would.
Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, uh, but that would have to happen regardless, right?
So, um, if you, uh, took the suggestion of Selectman Hogan, and said that you will, you're approving primarily location D, secondarily location A, but giving flexibility to the town administrator in consultation with the town engineer to move the location of D or A plus or minus fifteen feet, then you don't have to come back to the board. Uh, you are going to have to come back to the board if neither D nor A works, as noted on the sheet, you know, where the pin is put. Uh, if it requires moving fifteen feet one way or the other, you've reserved that decision to the board of Selectmen under the current condition.
So, Donna, then, would it make the sense if, if Mr. Hogan made an amended, uh, offered an amended condition to give that to the town administrator and engineering, and at this point, and then pretty much, then they won't, nobody has to come back, it'll be handled in-house, is that my understanding?
Uh, unless for some reason, even that amount of flexibility doesn't work, so if.
Bob, would you be willing to make that amended condition?
Well, I, I defer to Attorney Brewer as to whether that's gonna be enough.
I would agree, Jim, I, I, I think, uh, the attorney makes a good point. I would agree, Jim. I, I, I think, uh, the attorney makes a good point. If, if, if this fifteen-foot flexibility. Doesn't work, then we need to reconvene and, uh.
Okay.
Have this, have this talk again. Uh, I, 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 I don't think in the public interest that, um. Not that I don't have all the confidence in the world and, and, and Mister Sagarino and Tom Hayes and Mister Maxson and. And the rest that they couldn't iron these, these things out, but I think. Yeah, for, for, um, um, purposes of, uh, transparency and everything else that. They should be held, a, a public hearing should be held.
Alright, so the, I, I, if I'm not mistaken, the feeling I'm getting is leave it as is, the condition as is. Is that correct? Or, or did we want to amend that condition?
As long as the, the condition is stated, because the intent was is that A or, uh, sorry, D or A. Plus or minus fifteen feet would be handled in-house. And then should that not work, it would come back to us.
I, I don't think that's the way the condition reads right now. It's D or A, uh, with the flexibility of the fifteen plus or minus feet being reserved to the Board of Selectmen. Betty, is that what it says now?
Yes, Donna.
Okay, then, then I would like to make a motion to amend that so that. The fifteen feet plus or minus can be decided by the town administrator in consultation with D P W and town engineering. And that anything outside of that would fall back to the Select Board for, uh, you know, review.
Okay, Donna, is it, can I just simply go into asking for a second for that amendment?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, do I have a second to Nick's amendment?
Uh, uh, you know what, Jim, I'm, uh, Mister Chairman, I'm comfortable with, with that amendment and, uh, I'd be happy to second that.
Okay, so we have an amendment, uh, as presented by Nick, so we'll vote on that amendment only. Um, Vice Chair Priest.
Yes.
Selectman Hogan.
Yes.
Uh, Selectman Runyon.
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. So four zero on amending the condition with regards to site locations, D and A. Do any further discussion or do we have to, everything has been. Donna, if I'm not mistaken, everything's been, the conditions have all been approved or, uh, voted in favor of. Do we need to make one motion to accept everything or is making all those little motions? I don't want to say little motions, but individual motions acceptable for this to go through?
So the, the individual motions are fine, uh, the way they are. You don't have to do a big omnibus motion to, to. Re, re vote everything you've just voted. Uh, but you, I'm not sure if any other Selectmen has any further conditions that. Neither Kristen nor I came up with that you might want to consider. And then the final, uh, vote that you might want to consider is whether you want to authorize somebody to sign this decision on behalf of the board. Or do you each want to, uh, reserve the right to, to have your individual signatures on, on the decision?
Alright, so all I'll do is I'll go down the list to see if there are any other. Conditions by each board member and then we'll take that other vote. So. Vice Chair, uh, Priest, do you have any other recommend, any other condition you'd like to discuss?
At this time, no, sir.
Uh, Chairman, I'm sorry, Selectman Hogan.
Nope, not at this time.
Selectman Runyon.
Uh, I, I, I do not, but I, again, I want to, uh, reiterate. Um, that I appreciate the, uh, uh. Folks who have, uh, come out, who are, uh, well-informed on this, who are well-educated, concerned citizens. I appreciate their, their interest in this, uh, in this matter. It's been a, uh, probably one of the. Longest discussions that, uh, this board has had and I appreciate everybody's, um. Interest in this matter and, um, and I, and I just want to thank you all for your participation. Thanks, Jim.
I couldn't agree with you more, Selectman Runyon. Uh, I have no further requests for conditions. Uh, Donna, just, uh, bear with me while I get the wording of this correctly.
Before you go there, Jim?
Yes.
I noticed Kristen Kastner has her hand raised.
Okay, I can't, it's Kristen, go ahead.
I never put my hand down. I'm sorry.
Okay. That being said, um. Do we have anybody, can, does anyone, anyone might want to make a motion? To authorize a signatory to this? Or do we, does someone, uh, or do we want to authorize? I'm sorry. Do we want to authorize someone to be the signatory on this, other than?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we authorize the town administrator.
Okay. Number one, Donna, is that the correct wording or is that wording sufficient?
Yeah, no, you can authorize the town administrator to sign the decision on behalf of the board.
Okay, so Selectman Hogan made that motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon made a second. Okay, roll call. Vice Chairman Priest.
Yes.
Selectman Hogan.
Yes.
Selectman Runyon.
Yes.
And the chair is a yes as well. Donna, are we done?
You are done.
Oh, you better believe I'm done.
You need a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion, Mister Chairman.
Okay, by Selectman Runyon, seconded by Mister Hogan. So Vice Chair Priest.
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Thank you, everybody, yes.
And before I say yes, I also want to say thank you. We could not have gone through this without all of your help. It's been a team effort and good teams win, so thank you and yes, I vote to adjourn. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.